I'd like to call tonight the board, the Select Board meeting. We're going to be going into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21, May 19th, 2025. We'll be going into room 309. The board will discuss the following. List on Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a3, to discuss with respect to potential litigation arising out of disposal of solid waste and release site if an open meeting may have been detrimental effect on the litigation process of the public body and the chair so declare. Also, we will discuss PFAS litigation, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Those are the two items, and we will return hopefully in time for 6:30 start. Thank you.
So we have to, we have to make a motion.
Motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Middleton, Mr. Mickelson. There it goes again. Seconded by?
Chris O'Neil.
Chris O'Neil. We're going to have to do, we're missing a member currently, so we will do a roll call vote. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Thank you.
And Mrs. Brooks says yes. Off we go.
Mr. Mickelson is not here.[178.20]
Select Board meeting of May 19th to order. Before doing such, according to minutes, I want to let everyone know that the meeting is being recorded and being shown live, as well as able to access later on. Before we start the meeting, I'd like you to all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand. We stand tonight to honor our veterans, past and present, and remind everyone that next Monday is Memorial Day, and we will be celebrating that with our annual parade from upon a Gansett Bay to the DCTV station on Russell's Mills Road. We have a hearing tonight, which we will start so we can be on time for you.
Thank you for having me.
You're very welcome. The first one we're going to look at is a petition to relocate the pole number 435-112 and anchor on Tucker Road, Dartmouth. Oh, I have to open the public hearing, sorry, still new at this. I open the public hearing at 6:38, okay?
And again, Jessica Elder from Eversource, representing Eversource, thank you for having me this evening, members of the Select Board. Great seeing everybody, feels like it's been a minute since I've been here. So, Eversource is requesting to install, well, actually relocating, a pole on Tucker Road. This pole is, originally, it's sitting on State Road, on the corner of State Road and Tucker Road, and this is a mass DOT project, so we're looking to relocate that pole for the mass DOT. It's going to be about 75 feet west of existing pole 435 over 11.
435, I'm sorry, what?
Pole, existing pole 435 over 11, which is in front of 263 State Road.
Okay.
If we require, if a detail is necessary, we will request one. Any work done to the area will be put back in the same condition or better, and it's, the job should only take a couple of days, max.
Thank you. I see, we have, you've provided us with a map, so we can see it on page eight of our packet. Is there anyone in the audience that is here to speak for this project? Do we have a gentleman? Come on up to the mic.
My name is John McSweeney. I'm the owner of 1406 Tucker Road.
John, excuse me, could you speak on the microphone?
My name is John McSweeney, and I'm the owner of the property at 1406 Tucker Road, which is adjacent to the, where the pole is going to be moved, so.
The pole being moved here.
Moved from here, from here to here. So, my question was, I know, my question was, I know going back like 10 years or so, this corner had a, was a high-traffic accident corner, and I was wondering what the motivation for moving the pole was, and whether it was tied into making the corner safer and...
It's a mass DOT project that's happening, so there's a lot of poles that are going to be going in and moving and relocating there. Also, mass DOT is doing a project, so they're requesting us to move that.
Mass DOT is going to be doing work on State Road?
Yep.
And as part of that project, which is reconfiguring that intersection, that's why they've asked for that.
Yeah, that was my, that was my question, is, is the motivation behind moving the pole tied into reconfiguring the intersection and improving it?
Yes.
So, I'm happy for that. So, that's what I wanted to understand, is if that was what the motivation was, and I'm getting an answer that it is, so that's good, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Anyone against the project? Anyone at the table here?
We anticipate that the number of poles, there's going to be a series of moves, because...
We anticipate that the number of poles, there's going to be a series of moves because this, this is moving on. Any, any indication of that information?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Yeah, I didn't even stand with my question either. This is obviously a good thing, because it seems like it's going to be the start of the resurrecting and the recreation of Route 6 along that way.
Yes.
Do you have an indication of what's going to happen next, or is there any kind of series going on, or just one at a time?
We kind of rely on Mass DOT, we're kind of following their, their lead.
So, you don't have any, any kind of projection as to how this is going to go?
I do not, I can...
One pole at a time?
I can find out.
Okay. If you could find out.
Yeah, who would I, who should I?
I'll take myself.
Gary.
It'd be nice to know if that was going to be some kind of series, and things are moving along.
Okay.
Thank you.
We just haven't heard when the project's going to start.
Project, yep, okay.
One more hearing. Do we close this? I'm going to close, oh, what, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I'll have Anthony Vali get ahold of you, okay? I'll have him contact you and get that information.
Thanks. I'm going to close this portion of the hearing, and open up a new hearing with Eversource's petition to install one new JO pole with Guy and Anchor on Chase Road, Dartmouth. Oh, I'm so sorry, I really need a cue card. All right, before we move on, I'd like to take a vote of our members to support this project.
Go ahead.
Motion made by Mr. O'Neill, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries 5-0. Now I'll open the second hearing. Opening the second hearing at 6:43. Eversource's petition to install one new JO pole with Guy and Anchor on Chase Road, Dartmouth.
Again, this is a pretty simple project. I'll explain, for those that don't know, JO is joint-owned, which means it's owned by both Verizon and Eversource. This pole, the pole that's going in is going almost directly across from the existing pole 73 over 15, which is in front of the 687 Chase Road, town of Dartmouth's own property, and it's going across the street about 42 feet, and we're installing a Guy and Anchor. Again, days for the project. As far as the detail, we will require one, if, seems like a pretty busy enough area, we probably should. And again, the work will go back into the condition it was in or better.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in favor of this pole move? Anyone on the board? Anyone in the audience to speak against this pole move? And anyone on the board? Any questions, comments, concerns? Ready to vote?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonnell. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? No, all in favor, passes. Thank you, Jessica, for coming in.
Thank you so much. You're welcome, have a good evening.
I am now going to close the public hearing. Close the public hearing, and before we go into our regular meeting, I just have a statement to read. Locally elected and appointed officials hold positions of public trust and are accountable to the communities they serve. Their behavior, both in public and private capacities, must reflect the highest standards of integrity, transparency, and respect. As representatives of the people, they are expected to act ethically, lawfully, and in the best interest of their constituents at all times. Elected and appointed officials must demonstrate respect for diverse perspectives, uphold democratic values, and avoid any actions or language that could undermine public confidence in government. They are responsible for conducting themselves in a manner that promotes collaboration, fosters civil discourse, and supports the fair and impartial administration of their duties. Any conduct that reflects personal bias, abuse of power, or disregard for the responsibilities of the office is unacceptable. Upholding these principles is not only a matter of personal character, but essential to the preservation of public trust and the effective functioning of local governments. Furthermore, when making a statement or writing a letter, one must be careful to either within the statement, body of the letter, or at the signature, or qualifying endorsement of the statement, to make it clear that the content of either represents their personal position, or by a motion and vote of the board, is a position of the entire board, committee, commission, et cetera. Any elected or appointed official should reflect on their personal ability to uphold the Code of Conduct in advance of signing and continuing their position. So, tonight, I believe you all have a copy of the Code of Conduct that we have signed in the past, and I'm going to have you look at that and reflect on that, and see if we need to update it, or provide any other guidance to that. As you know, we not only sign that, but we do send it out to all our other boards and committees to sign, and so at our next meeting, which is June 2nd, I would like us to review that and sign that at that time. All right. Moving into new business. Our first item is the constable appointment of Raymond Jesus Jr., and I believe Mr. Jesus is here. So, just come right up to the podium, state your name.
Raymond Jesus Junior.
Right. And as it says here, this is the first time that you're asking to be a constable in town?
Yes, ma'am.
I see we've been signed off by all the agencies. Have you been a constable in other communities?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Two feet, jumping in. All right. Anyone have questions for Mr. Jesus?
No, I know of Mr. Jesus's reputation, he also works for the Sheriff's Department, and he also does LTC classes, so I have no problem in approving the application. Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. McDonnell, seconded by Mr. O'Neill. Any other questions? None? Let's vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Passed unanimously. Congratulations, Mr.?
Thank you, everyone.
Jesus, you're welcome. All right, next in our packet, we have a, a request to appoint Teresa Hamm to the Capital Planning Committee, and that request came from the Capital Planning Committee. So, I know Teresa has served on it previously, and while I would assume this was a reappointment, it turns out she had never actually been appointed before, so.
Motion to officially appoint.
Thank you, Christopher, seconded by Mr. Tattlebaum. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? The motion passes, 5-0. Next, we have a letter from Edward I. Capone to be appointed to the Greater New Bedford Regional Refuge Management District Board. I have checked in with members of that board, they're highly in favor of this appointment. Mr. I. Capone is not here tonight. What is the board's pleasure on this?
Motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint by Mr. Mickelson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Neill. All in favor of this appoint?
Just a quick clarification, because I know in the protocol in the past, I think, has been that we've got written confirmation that, that the committee member or the chair has seen the application, approved it, but we don't have that, but on the other hand, we now have that input to say, have nothing against Mr. I. Capone, it's just that the protocol seemed to be that...
So, in the future, you'd like to see the protocol from the board itself, accepting that?
In the past, I believe, we've gotten a, not only the, the letter of intent from the applicant, but also that submitted to the, to the committee, and the chair responds in favor or not. I think that's been the protocol.
I did speak to them earlier tonight?
Yep.
Just to double-check. So, that will be noted. Who are you, who is he replacing?
Christine LeBlanc.
Received Christine LeBlanc.
Yes.
Yeah.
You see their resignation?
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Who's going against? Hearing none? Motion passes, 5-0. All right, next in our packet, we have another mission, and that's the Historic Commission. This letter did come from Michelle Viera, bringing up two candidates to the Historic Commission, and within the packet you have a letter that states both Daniel Cardoza Jr. and Robert Hamilton, and it was forwarded to us from Robert Mohald, which is a member of the Chair of the DHC. Are those candidates here tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
No. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint both candidates, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. McDonnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing and seeing none? Motion passes unanimously, yes. All right, now, the moment we've all been waiting for, a little update on the Crapo Hill landfill, and we really have been very interested in this.
Don't get too excited. All the guns are here.
Well, good evening. My name is John Boragard, and I'm the chairman of the, of the District Committee, and thank you for having us. It's always a pleasure to come in front of you and give you an update on the, on what's going on out at the Refuge District. We try to stay under the radar, that's our goal, and I think we've done a pretty good job and run a pretty good operation out there, but, you know, we, we do appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you. Tonight, with me here is Anthony Novelli, who is the District...
What's your title?
Oh, thank you, Executive Director, but he does everything. Anthony has been just a godsend to us. We've had, we've been very fortunate at the, at the Refuge District, and we've had a series of very, very wonderful executive directors, and Anthony is continuing in that line, and we couldn't be happier. Also here tonight is another board member, Michael Gagné, who's been, obviously, all of you know Mike, and he is a, you know, just a pleasure to work with, and thank you. And for the record, we were very much in favor of having Ed I. Capone join the, join the board. As you know, Ed has been around for one or two hundred years, and he and Mike were actually part of the original team that put together the Refuge District. So, to have that level of institutional knowledge back on the board together is, is just a huge help for us, so we're looking forward to having Ed join. So, Anthony has put together a little presentation, quick, I think it's three slides, that he's going to go over with you, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, John. It's a pleasure to be here. As I said, my name is Anthony Novelli, I'm the Executive Director for the Greater New Bedford Regional Refuge Management District, it's always fun to say. We own and operate the Crapo Hill landfill, and we work closely with the town of Dartmouth and the city of New Bedford, our other member community, on all their waste reduction and recycling programs, a lot more than just disposing of the waste, but we are charged with managing solid waste. So, the district owns and operates the Crapo Hill landfill in Dartmouth, and we are able to provide Dartmouth with very favorable, reliable, and economically responsible waste disposal, which is not an easy thing to do. This packet right here, I'll briefly go over the slides, feel free to stop me if you have any questions. This is a snapshot from the top of the landfill, if anyone hasn't been, there's quite a nice view from the top, and we encourage tours, for everyone to come learn about what's going on, and so the area in front of you is fully capped, and you can kind of see the operating area in the back of this photo. A quick estimate that I put together compared to, you know, what we charge at the gate rate, we've probably saved the town of Dartmouth over $11 million since the landfill opened, just in disposal costs. So, we continue to prioritize the member communities and try to keep the disposal costs as low as we can. In the, in the bullets there, you can see, we are planning to construct an additional landfill cell, which will bring us to over 12 years of capacity, that has not quite been permitted or constructed yet, and we're in the process of that now. The third bullet kind of details the assessment to the member communities, this one's to Dartmouth, you can see an average of $24 a ton is really unheard of around here. Other communities are paying well over $100 a ton to dispose of their solid wastes, and that cost just seems to keep going up as there's fewer and fewer options for disposal. So, I know it's not the most wonderful thing to have in your backyard, but it is a really important asset for the town. So, we are doing our best to keep those disposal rates as low as we can by trying to secure other sources of revenue to help offset the costs to the members. So, I think that's just a quick overview. So, in that operating area you saw in the back, which is our existing, currently permitted and constructed area, we did a site survey, and as of the end of 2024, they estimated about six years of capacity remaining. If any of you remember, I did appear in August and gave you a similar update, and I said five years at the time. That is not an error. Due to our efforts to reduce the incoming wastes and really extend this lifespan as long as we can, we've effectively prolonged the life of these cells. So, as of the, the current usage rates, as we're using it now, we've got about six years left in the currently constructed cells, and we are working to permit and construct an additional landfill cell within the footprint of the landfill. We've really cut back on the amount of waste we've accepted from outside of member communities. This does have an effect on our revenue, but we've been trying to prioritize the, the costs of the members as well. So, there's a bit of a balancing act of, you know, we can generate revenue from, from other tip fees, but it also consumes capacity, so. I highly encourage anyone to check out Dartmouth Recycling on Facebook. Our team does a great job working with the town and promoting all the recycling and waste reduction programs, so shout out to all the waste reduction staff, Marissa Perez, Dormitzer, Meg Hebert, they do a great job on that. So, the additional landfill cell is, is currently being designed, and we'll be going through the permitting process. It is going to stay within the landfill's footprint, we are not going outside of any of our approved permits or boundaries. We estimate it's going to add another seven years of capacity on top of the six years that we currently have in the existing cells, bringing us to around 12 or 13 years. And also, I think it's important to note that the, the original permits for the landfill permitted 70 acres of landfill construction. As we currently have it, it's about 50 acres in size, and, and this additional cell would add another four or five acres. So, even after this next cell, we're at roughly 54, 55 acres in size out of a total of 70 permitted acres. So, there is the potential to develop additional capacity on the say beyond that cell seven that we're talking about now. It'd be a matter of designing it, constructing it, figuring out the costs, and doing, kind of analyzing it from there, but we're not saying that's, that's the end of the road either, so. We've been very proactive in funding this new cell, it is not a cheap endeavor, but the district's been preparing to do this for a long time, so we're, we're ready to, ready to move when the new cell is permitted. I tried to keep this relatively brief, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Ms. Brooks?
So, when we looked at these numbers, I mean, Dartmouth has been all very good about recycling, but I'm seeing that we have, I think it was on the first slide that you said, that we had a 2% increase, which over, in FY '24 over FY '23, which I know is not a lot. It's possible that could be due to increased population, but I guess I really want to know, are you still seeing, are we still good recyclers in Dartmouth?
Absolutely, yeah. The town has a, has a very good recycling program, has very good resources available, the, the transfer station is a, is a very inviting and popular place for residents, and I do believe the recycling programs are effective. I don't think that that 2% increase is, is reflective of a, a failure to recycle properly. There have been, you know, fluctuations year to year, it's not up every year, it was, it was down, I think, the couple of years before that, so I wouldn't say it's due to a lack of recycling.
Okay.
I just might add, so...
Mr. Tattlebaum?
We've had conversations, and going to continue to have conversations with the city of New Bedford, to try to do, to try to fi, figure out ways that they contribute... to try to do, to try to figure out ways that they contribute to make their contributions. Because I, I believe they're doing about 85% of the content of that landfill comes from the city. And if we can influence them in some way to do something better than they are, that'll help us and maybe extend the, beyond. We've had conversations, going to continue to try to do that as well.
Just a very quick clarification of that. When we say the 85%, 15% breakdown, which is how we kind of calculate the assessments, that is just of the tonnage that the two member communities deliver. It's not of the total incoming waste. So that, that's how our assessment is calculated between the members. But absolutely, we spend a lot of time working with Dartmouth and New Bedford on all of their waste and recycling programs. Food waste diversion, you probably seen a lot about that, trying to promote composting, backyard composting bins. Anything we can try and find a better avenue for, for management besides sending it to a landfill, we're absolutely trying to promote it in both communities.
Ms. Sonia?
With the reduction that you mentioned earlier, how long has that been going on? A year or two years?
The reduction in waste acceptance? We've cut it back each year over the past three years.
And how are you financially? How healthy is the district financially right now?
As of right now, I would say the district is in a very strong financial position. As of right now, the, the waste disposal contracts are generally on one-year terms. We're executing our contracts through fiscal '26 right now. And we'll kind of try and be proactive about the contracts after that as well. But, you know, we always try to look ahead to future years. We've done multi-year agreements in the past, and we're trying to make sure we secure this disposal capacity, or, you know, the disposal contracts to help keep those costs low to the members. We do our best not to raise the assessments at all, but, you know, I don't think $26 a ton forever is feasible. But we certainly try to keep it as low as we can within, you know, reasonable, and also trying to keep in mind the, the long term, the lifespan in the end. So, you know, generally, if there's an increase in an assessment, it's with the thought that it will add additional capacity on the back end.
All right. So the, I mean, the opportunity, it looks like the, the opportunity that you have to grow is still there, right?
I mean. Yeah.
The capacity that you're, that you're growing into is going to bring us out quite a bit, 12, 12, 13 years?
That, with the, you know, cell seven, the, the one that we're planning to construct, it's, the designs are getting close to being done, and we'll be going through the permitting process this summer. Yeah, that'll bring, if, if that's permitted and constructed, that'll bring us to about 12 years. And then we'll evaluate our additional options after that. But there is space on the, you know, potential on the site without leaving the footprint or going beyond our existing permits to do so.
And, and you've got about 15 acres left after this, this next bump out, correct?
15 acres of, of like landfill area. So the site itself is larger, but the landfill area was approved to be 70 acres of the site.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think the townspeople understandably, you know, realize how much this has saved us. And that rate of 2411 is, is incredible. You know, what do you see as the biggest threat? From the town's perspective, 2411 is a far cry from, from a market rate of 110 per ton, right? So what do we have to worry about?
You know, I can't promise that that will continue. I think there is initial benefit that that's almost a set assessment at the beginning of the year. And if it does go up by 2%, you're, you know, it doesn't always go up by 2% as well. The, you know, the cost may increase, but it's not due to, you know, a failure of the district. It's, it's more just trying to preserve that capacity in the long run and take that 12 and turn it into 14. So those are the kind of decisions that Mike, John, the committee are always very thoughtful about. We don't take increased assessments lightly, but, you know, make sure we have.
Yeah.
So I, my, my two cents on that would be that, so we're all set, we're set for fiscal year '26. And as we know, all these, Anthony mentioned, all these contracts are one-year contracts. So in fiscal year '27, if we were, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. You know, a couple of years ago, E.L. Harvey at the last minute said, hey, we're, we're going to go to our own facility, pulled out. At that time, we actually contracted with the city of Fall River to take their trash. We don't know what's going to happen. They're contracted again through fiscal year '27. If for some reason, a large, a large contract like that does not get renewed, you know, it's business. We lose the revenue. So we are already working on replacing that revenue potentially through other sources. At some point, we may not be able, there's not a whole lot of new customers out there. So we, we may have to look at other revenue streams to bring in in order to offset some of that revenue so that we don't have to come back to the town and have a massive increase. That, all that outside revenue has been used to, basically to, to keep your rates, our rates, as low as possible, the assessments as low as possible. It's offsetting it. If we don't have that revenue to offset, then the only choice is to, is to increase the assessment to the city and to the town, which, that's what we desperately.
And it's the question of financial stability, right? We're going to have, if we need that cushion, how, how low can we go in the margin before we get really banged with a, with a rate increase?
We are, we are very, very fortunate due to, and this is not me at all, but due to good management over the years. Many, we have, we have a, a, a lot of money set aside for various, for post-closure, for building the new cell. We have, we've been, OPEB, everything is almost to the point of being fully funded. So we're in very good, I would say excellent financial condition. So that if we needed, if we had a couple of down years, the, matter of fact, Anthony and I were talking about it this afternoon. If, if we had a, a year where, look, you know, a large contract didn't get renewed, I don't think it would be suddenly the sky is going to fall overnight. We would have the means to be able to kind of, you know, kind of work our way into the necess, you know, and advise the town and the city that, okay, a higher assessment's the only way we can stay, you know, stay viable. We would never get to, I don't, I mean, hopefully, I don't, can never see this happening, getting to 110. You know, if we got up to 40 or 50, that would be considered, you know, as high as we'd ever want to go. So without, a whole lot of conversations taking place.
So with that being said, our competitors are obviously very competitive.
We, I mean, we're the only, luckily, it's kind of nice, we're the only game in town.
Right, but why would we lose, why would we lose that revenue at all?
There's some, and you want to, about shipping it out?
So the, the waste industry as a whole has been subject to a lot of mergers and acquisitions. There's a lot of larger companies that own disposal capacity in other states and basically are serving the collection and disposal needs in, in one combined contract, which can offer some benefits. But as a whole, a lot of Massachusetts' waste goes out of the state to facilities in other states. So the competition is not, you know, around the corner. It's, it's unfortunately, it's, it's traveling very far before it reaches its disposal destination.
They're doing that in bulk, obviously.
Yeah, it's, it's usually rail transport for long distances.
I would share this, that if we can't in, you know, if we get to the end life of the district, that's where we're headed, is, you know, in 13 years, we will be contracting, the town will be contracting to take their trash to Ohio, or Pennsylvania, or New York, you know, and other places. That's a little bit scary to me, because eventually, I think, you know, Ohio and New York and Pennsylvania are going to say, we don't want your trash anymore. And then what do we do? There is, as, as Anthony and Chris were discussing, there is, there is still room there. There's a whole lot of hurdles that we would have to overcome in order to make it work. But there are, there, there is still additional capacity there. We're going to need a whole lot of help with, from the city and from the town to, to make that happen. And we're going to need help from our, our local officials, because there are, I love that term, wetlands, in that area. And we would have to figure how all that, how all of that would work. We don't know. That would, the hope right now, the, the plan right now is let's get cell seven built, permitted, built. It's probably 90% of the way there now. We'll get that built, we'll be okay. And then we go on to, okay, what's our next plan? Where do we, where do we see this?
So, so the EPA must look, look upon that process that you've engaged in pretty well. You know, it, it seems like it's been a pretty tight process. We've kept the, the cost to an absolute minimum, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is that a question? Yeah, so, you know, we have various, we're regulated at various levels between the EPA, MASTEP, and on the local level as well. The costs aren't as much on the EPA level, it's more the local benefit, but I don't know if I fully understood the question there.
We just want to know that they're at the table and listening, and listening to all the good work that you're doing. On our end, is there anything else Dartmouth can do to, are we recycling everything we can recycle? Is there a product out there that we haven't added to the list?
When we find a, a program or a waste stream that we can find a diversion avenue for, we, you know, the transfer station is usually pretty quick to, to set something up. So as, as we find new outlets, you know, like, we announced recently that Boat Shrink Wrap has a program to be diverted. There's an option for Styrofoam, you know, that we're finding, you know, that's being done by a private business that compacts it into a, an installation board. So as we find things like that, we're, we're happy to try and, try and promote those and add new diversion streams, but as, as we are able.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Thank you. Is there ever a consideration that, that less revenue and less trash would extend the life and we can survive some way by, by trying to balance those numbers? Because it seems logical that if we could extend the life because we're taking in less, but that may not work financially at all.
Absolutely a consideration, and something we, we talk about often, really. It would be less revenue as a whole for the district from other sources, but it essentially, it may lead to higher assessments to the member communities. They may be paying a higher percentage of the, the total revenue of the district.
It's always part of that balance.
But that would add life to the long span, because we'd be taking in less waste and therefore preserving capacity. So, you know, an increase in assessment on the front end may add lifespan on, on the back end.
Okay.
But that is something we do talk about and keep in mind, for sure.
Great job. Good comment.
Mr. Gagné.
I'd just like to make one point, and that is on the issue of reuse and recycling. Since the very beginning, the land, Crapo Hill, the district has worked very closely with our Department of Public Works. And we have, by all consideration, a very sophisticated and state-of-the-art means of recycling a lot of different things, at a transfer station, well beyond what you see generally. As most recently, the organic waste system through the district and specifically through Marissa and some students at UMass Dartmouth, that program has gotten a lot of information, a lot of publicity. They have containers that they can obtain at the highway, at the administrative office at Braga Memorial to participate in the organic program. But I would just point out, the district is more than a management of a disposal site. From back in the days when Edith DeMello and Virginia Leha was there, and Hank, they've always been involved. The programs that we have with the curbside recycling were started jointly back in 2008 with a lot of participation from the district to get that up and going. So I think they work very well, well beyond, you know, put it in the ground. They, they know the landfill life is going to be geared to the issue of how much you can keep out of the ground. I think they do a very good job of working with our DPW on that.
Personally, I'm proud of the efforts that we make as, as a town to do that. You know, whenever it's trash day and I drive around and see everybody's got their, the correct bin out, and that's a topic of discussion on Facebook, which color bin is it this week? And I'm disheartened by our neighboring community that is not doing more. Because once you get in the groove of it, and your family gets in the groove, it's so automatic of having, you know, what goes into the recycling bin and what goes into the trash bin. I also, I have a composting bin and participate there as well. So it makes a huge difference in how much goes out in the orange bag every week.
But the, the philosophy is there with the district, because there are personnel that work for the district that go into the city of New Bedford and help manage non-compliance issues and get things back onto the right track. So again, they're helping in that, you know, of the vein, to, to get things so that everybody's working towards the same objective, and that is reduce, you know, the waste stream.
I just wanted to share one more thing, because, and just the fact that originally, when this district was opened, it was in 1995, the, the life expectancy was 20 years. It was 2015. We're now in 2025, and as you saw by the slides, we're talking, you know, potentially into the late 2030s. So, you know, this is, this is really a success story for the town. It's a success story for the city that we've been, that we're able to maintain this. And if we can keep going and do some real creative things, we could probably get up to the, you know, 2050 if we, if we can all work together and get this done, so.
It's remarkable, really.
Yeah, yeah, it really is.
Truly speaking, yeah.
Yeah. Nobody cares about their trash until they care about it. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
I'm surprised that it hasn't gone up with the number of Amazon boxes, that Cardboard Day isn't a little more popular.
Well, in, in Dartmouth, we see a lot more recycling. So that's, now, just the cost to recycle has gone through the roof. What used to be a revenue source is now it costs more to actually get rid of some of the, some of the, the recycling materials. So, but it keeps it out of the landfill, and that's what, that is the most important thing. We'll work with the recycling, so, anyway. Thank you.
Catch 22. Thank you very much. No, it costs money. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, I see that we have, our next presentation is going to be on the Long Range Capital Planning Committee Town Meeting Presentation. So we're getting a look tonight by Mr. Tattelbaum, who is a member and one of the instigators of the Long Range Capital Planning Committee. And this presentation, as I said, is going to be shown at Town Meeting. This is our first run edit.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks.
Guinea pigs.
See, my colleague, Rob Almes, there with me. Thank you, Rob. This is a, I guess, a trial run. The moderator, Melissa Haskell, has been gracious enough to allow us a 10-minute, into the minute, 10-minute presentation. And it's related, she's very careful in what she allows in Town Meeting, because it has to be related. And we coordinated the efforts to look at long-range and short-term capital, and we, we kind of made this presentation together. So here we go. Today, tonight I'm here as the, as the Chair of the Long Range Capital Planning Committee. The moderator has graciously given me 10 minutes to give you a crash course into what this committee has been working on and what long-range planning is. We do not have time for questions now, but members of the Long Range Capital Committee will be present after the meeting. And we will have opportunities for you to submit comments to the committee and learn more at additional information workshops. If I can move this along? Okay, I did it. What is long-range capital planning? It offers a three-part approach to planning for Dartmouth's future. It looks to the future that helps the town plan and budget and save for large projects. The types of projects that fall under long-range capital are one-time large projects that the town needs to borrow for. And like I just mentioned, we can plan and prepare for these projects before they are more costly or more importantly, require crisis management. This is not in the post office. This is actually people who are in the town. We have eight members, four are volunteers and four are from staff. Myself up there on the left, I'm from the Select Board. Bruce Brooks is from the Capital Planning Committee. Rob Almes, the Chair of the Board of Public Works. And Terry Ham's from the Finance Committee, the four volunteers. Down below, we have James Colley, the Assistant Superintendent of Schools. Magnolia McCormick, she does the Communication Coordinator. Chris Vitale, Assistant Town Administrator. And Gary Carrero, Director of Budget and Finance, interim Town Administrator. It's a great group, and we've got a cross-section of where we spend the most amount of money. People who qualify. We did our best to rate these projects based on importance, one to 10. So here we have identified which projects need to be done soonest and, and which we expect to do down the road. As we look at the slide, let me be very clear, extremely clear. The committee put much time and analysis into the list, but we recognize that you all may have different perspectives. We want to hear from you. At the end of this presentation, you'll be able to rank these projects through an online survey. We're going to go through these, the list a little more carefully now. Public Works. We've identified three Public Works projects that will need to be completed in the foreseeable future. These are all critical. Drinking water treatment facility. As regulations change and the town creates more housing, a significant strain is put on Dartmouth's water supply treatment facilities, which must be upgraded to accommodate new growth. Wastewater collection and treatment infrastructure. The existing wastewater treatment facility has reached its permitted capacity in many elements of the 37-year-old. elements of the 37-year-old facility need to be replaced. The Payneham Bridge. Dartmouth's working with the state on design plans for a new bridge, which the state is funding. The construction timeline and funding is still uncertain. We'd love to be able to wait for the state to fund the construction of this bridge, but that may be a risk due to the bridge's current condition. Schools. There were four public school projects that we'll need to consider over the next 20 or so years. Most urgent is the high school roof and windows. The roof and windows, the town got what they paid for with these. The lowest bid 20 years ago was old technology. Roof design and technology has advanced significantly since then. We got our 20-year warranty out of that roof and windows. Middle school. The middle school was constructed in 1955. It needs replacement. A plan to build a new Dartmouth High School on that site and turn the current high school into a middle school is being considered. DeMello and Potter Schools. DeMello and Potter Schools, both built in the 1950s, are slated for replacement. Construction is expected in 2030 and 2035, prioritized by the condition of each building. And the Quinn School. Quinn School is expected to need important repairs by 2040 to maintain a safe and effective learning environment. Community services. The town also has projects that service the community outside of the schools and wastewater. Many of these projects have been in the works, and residents have expressed interest in pursuing. The Council on Aging. The Maria Connor Center for Active Living. Upgrades to Dartmouth Council on Aging are already underway. Phase one, which includes a new kitchen and enhanced gathering spaces, is in progress. Phase two will focus on a general renovation. Recreation Center. The town conducted a feasibility study in 2019 identifying the need and desire for Recreation Center in Dartmouth. And finally, the Memorial Stadium. Repairs and upgrades are necessary to ensure continued community use and safety for those using the stadium. As mentioned earlier, several projects are already underway. The COA projects have been a work in progress for years, and the state has been designing and funding the Payneham Bridge design for the past few years. We also anticipate the work on the high school roof and windows will need to begin with the next year or so. We plan to start the wastewater projects in 2027 under the guidance of DPW Director Tim Barber. Then the schools, one by one, will get the work we expect they will need in the next five to 20 years. The Rec Center, Memorial Stadium, and Payneham Bridge construction dates are unknown because there are factors which require further planning and possible state funding. Now, you're probably thinking, how on earth is this town going to pay for all of this? To give a brief explanation, there are a couple of options. For the schools and community service projects, the town will likely need a debt exclusion. This is basically a loan, like a mortgage, that the town gets to pay for some of these large projects. The loan is paid for by an increase to residents' real estate tax bills. But once it's paid off, there is no more financial burden, and the increase goes away. These large projects are typically on a payment schedule of 20 to 30 years. Town meeting and general election voters will need to approve this, so it is not without checks and balances. However, the town will be doing everything possible to get grants and state and federal funding to reduce the tax burden on residents for all these long-range projects. When it comes to school projects, the town will not agree to complete them without the MSBA funding to help supplement the cost of those projects. For the wastewater projects, they must be paid for with enterprise funding. This means the cost will be covered with an increase in users' bills. Like you saw before, identified projects are designed, prioritized, and assigned estimated costs. The town will establish an expedited project timeline for each project. Thanks for listening. I hope you found it helpful and insightful. We recognize this is a fresh, new look at long-range planning. We realize these big projects and big costs are intimidating, but with thoughtful planning, our town can make these projects affordable and achievable. As promised at the beginning, please let us know your thoughts by scanning the QR code, which you'll be able to do at Town Meeting. It will take just a few minutes to rank the projects. If you want to know more about the projects and to participate in the process, mark your calendar for the three upcoming workshops we are holding in September. Those dates are not filled in yet. We're working on it, but for Town Meeting, those dates will be there. It'll be, one will be right after Labor Day, the week of, and then two more after. And we expect, as you can see, North Branch Library will be for Public Works. The schools will be at this room, and the community service at the Council of Aging. I'm bad at living right now. That'll all be filled in for the meeting. Lastly, I just want to say that, I'm finished with the delivery. This is not all going to happen next week. The shovels and the construction equipment are not rolling in to spend $300 million. The idea is to plan, focus, find as much money as we can to pay for it, and it's something that is done by a priority, so that we do it in basis of the need, the condition of these structures and the facilities, and ultimately to put a plan together that's affordable in a way that people can agree on and understand. And we, these workshops are all designed to allow people to get as much input as possible. We only have the 10 minutes. We can't ask for, we can't take questions and answers during Town Meeting. There isn't that time, nor would she allow it, and I understand that. We will be there after the meeting to answer any questions we can. All committee members have committed, and of course, we'll have the projects. And we may have more than one or two or three of these going forward, see how it goes. We have some time, so this is required, to lay out a strategy that makes sense. We get as much input as we can. Any questions, comments? Love to have if you have them. Was it 12?
Bob timed you, Rob timed you. No, I think it's helpful. I think the slides make sense, and they're not included in our packet, though, right?
Four.
Town meeting members?
The packet, I don't think so. Do you think they should?
No, I think packets may.
But the QR code is going to, well, I know that. Some people may not be able to do it, but what do you think?
No, and I think once we have those dates filled in and then we'll publicize those dates, people who have thoughts on any of those issues will attend those meetings.
We hadn't considered passing anything out for the Town Meeting, should we?
I would say yes. I'd probably, even just this screen with the dates for all three would be.
I know the QR code will probably satisfy more than half the people there, but others, we should have something else.
Yeah.
I think you're right, Chris. I think if just this screen is as a handout at the table, then I've got the QR code in front of me, and I can already start putting the dates in of those meetings.
The internet there is kind of, huh.
Shy.
She says it's going to work fine.
Really? Yeah, okay, all right. Well, at least it'll have it, they can bring it home.
It's a fantastic idea. It's good addition. Agreed.
Great job, David. Great job.
We have a fantastic group. Everybody's in there for the same reason. We understand there's going to be pushback, there's going to be intimidation, but we're ready because, but we have it all cross-checked. And, you know, the DPW, and Rob and I, we've done a lot of work together. That's where a lot of the money is going to be spent, and it's not going to come from the state to pay half it, so that we have to do it the right way, let people know. But we also want to keep the existing equipment going until we get the project going, which is what they're doing a careful job with. We're spending money short-term.
And I also like the way that it was broken out. Water treatment was one thing, and then wastewater collection was another. It's not one big ticket. And I also like the way that you described the ways to get the money. Debt exclusion, if I find that page. I think that's helpful for people that are sitting there to say, it's not, you know, we're not saying the override word, and we're not.
We don't know.
Right, we don't know. This is, debt exclusion is an option, but it's not the first thing we're talking about, and we're not talking about going, increasing taxes. We're talking about looking at all other possibilities first, so I think that's helpful.
I would just like to give a shout-out to the members of the committee. Jim Carley especially, we've asked him to project and do something about the schools and buildings much sooner than they would have considered. And this is not going to be, anything we projected, it may not even be anywhere close to we end up with. But they got something on paper, they projected what they could do. There's a lot of work to be done in terms of what the schools will end up doing and how we end up doing it. But at least we have a target of some kind of move that we can move towards and then make a final decision.
The only thing I can add, Dave, is on, and you wouldn't include it in this, but down the road, and I'm sure you'll hit it on those projects that you have, or the sessions that you have, the breakout sessions. But just to show the town's debt limit, what the ratios actually look like, where we've been on debt and where we are now, because a lot of people don't know what those numbers look like. And if they're opposed to projects this size, they'll be opposed because they're debt-averse, right? So if we can explain exactly where the town is as far as the ratio goes.
Our goal for these sessions will have that material. Gary's done a lot of work on that. And we also know that whether it comes from the enterprise fund or it comes from debt exclusion, we still pay it out of our own pockets.
Right, exactly.
And the goal is to have at some point in time, say, it'll cost you X amount of cents per bill over time, and that'll pay for it. We want people to know what it's going to cost.
Right.
And no one cares whether it's an enterprise user fee or it's a debt exclusion. They want to know, what's it going to cost me? And that's the goal here as we go forward and put numbers on these projects. And lastly, you know, we took Maggie on as a Communication Director to do, to better communicate with town, and she has done a fantastic job. She's getting her legs under her to really understand and get the word out on projects. And this, to me, is going to be a major, I've said this to her, it's going to be a major springboard for her to show the town of what's capable, how we can communicate better. And she has a dedication towards that. And the QR codes and all this kind of stuff, which she's been working on, and ways to convey the messages we want to get out, along with all the other members. They've been fantastic.
Thank you for the preview.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is inhold a license approval for Baymont Inn.
Thanks. Is that okay?
As you can see, everything has been turned in. We just need to vote on this one. Any comments or questions about the Baymont Inn? Hearing none, are we ready to vote? Or can I get a motion?
Just out of curiosity, why did it take so long?
It was.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the timeline. The application was submitted November 13th. Most of the information was done eight days later, where everything was assigned, and then looking at, went to the building inspector's approval on January 27th, went to the health board on the same date. Building looked at it March 24th, health, 513. At that point, was there any concerns or was there something going on?
So when Viewfromit was first set up, they had this, I don't want to call it a dummy account, but it was this standard account that everything, it was a, everything just went into that account, and it shouldn't be. So this happened to go into that account, an email address, when I say account, it's an email address. And so this got lost in the.
All right, got lost in the shuffle?
Yeah. So both Melanie in the office and.
Found out about it and then took care of it. I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Anyone for a second?
Second.
Mr. Mickelson, thank you. Any other questions, concerns, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No, all in favor, passes unanimously, 5-0. And next, we have the interim administrator's update. So Gary?
So thank you, Madam Jen. The only thing I have tonight was that on Friday, May 16th, the Dartmouth Friends of the Elderly, in conjunction with the Dartmouth Council on Aging, celebrated Older Americans' Month for the month of May at the New Bedford Country Club. There were close to about 150 people in attendance. It was a nice tribute to the Dartmouth residents who were served by both these two great organizations.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Mickelson was in attendance?
Yes, wonderful. Had by all.
Excellent.
The ladies all were decked out with beautiful hats.
Even better. All right. Proposed town projects. We put that on there as a placeholder. I know we met recently to go over them, so I think by our next meeting, we will actually have a list.
Yep. Just to update the board on the organizational chart that I had proposed a couple of months ago. We've been meeting, two meetings now with the Land Use Group. I have a meeting set up with finance at the end of this month, and organizing a meeting with public safety. So those will be coming forward, and I'm forwarding that information to the board in case the members want to show up to those meetings. The last one is the community services, which I'll be putting together after public safety. So that's just an update.
Thank you. All right. All business. Anything on the 40B update?
No, no updates.
Bliscana?
No updates.
No updates.
Municipal broadband?
No updates.
EP Title 5?
I was going to look at these.
Can we look at the minutes of April 28?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes made by Mr. McDonald. A second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. O'Neill. Any other considerations on the minutes?
Okay, for me.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have approved those minutes. And now we have Select Board updates. Mr. O'Neill, anything?
Um, no.
Okay. Mr., I'm going to go back and forth. Mr. Tattelbaum?
I do. Regarding, an update on regarding last week's meeting, last meeting, week before or last week?
Five.
On a personal basis, I have never received as much input via email, via phone, via meetings in town regarding the meeting and Mr. McDonald's attitude during that meeting. I have something I want to say in a motion I have, but before I do that, I would certainly offer the opportunity, Mr. McDonald, to make any comments first.
On your motion?
There is no motion. No motion.
Yeah.
You have the floor, David. I'm, I'll speak later.
This is a motion I want to make to the Dartmouth Select Board on Monday, May 19. A motion to direct Select Board Member Sean McDonald to submit a written letter of apology directed to the Town Dartmouth Finance Committee and the Select Board, as well as the staff and volunteers of the town and its residents. This apology must address at minimum the specific issues set forth in the Town Dartmouth Select Board Code of Conduct. Conduct of members, respect for the process, and conduct of public meetings. There'll be no tolerance for this behavior, and any future repetition will result in intensified action by the Select Board. That's the motion.
This is the first I am hearing of this?
Yep.
I believe earlier tonight I addressed this and said that we were going to be looking at the Code of Conduct, but a motion is on the floor, has been seconded. Any other information? All right, I'm going to take a roll call vote for this. This is in support of this motion.
I have one comment.
Yep. Yep.
Suggested different choices, some more drastic and less than others. Mr. McDonald's been a longtime member of this group. He's been a longtime participant in town government and deserves a second chance, in my view, and based on the input I've also gotten. This is a fair assessment of trying to, trying to address this, address the issue and make something good out of something that wasn't very good. And this was my, what I would call a compromise to, to address the matter in a way that's fair.
I guess I'm sort of surprised hearing about this. But I will let it run its course, so-
Madam Chair, can you read the motion again for me, please?
Yes. A motion to direct Select Board member Sean McDonald to submit a written letter of apology directed to the Town of Dartmouth Finance Committee and the Select Board, as well as the staff and volunteers of the town and its residents. This apology must address at minimum the specific issues set forth in the Town of Dartmouth Select Board Code of Conduct. Conduct of members, respect for the process, conduct of public meetings. There will be no tolerance for this behavior, and any further repetition will result in intensified action by the Select Board. The motion is on the floor, and I would like to amend the motion. Can I do that? So my amended motion would not that this needs to be a written statement, that if Mr. McDonald chooses to make a statement, that that would be acceptable. I find that this is specific and targeted to Mr. McDonald. And I believe, upon review of the meeting, which I did earlier today, watched the video, I think there were, there were egg on more faces than Mr. McDonald's. But my motion is that the, Mr. McDonald would not have to offer a written letter of apology. That a statement would be acceptable. The motion, so I, there was a motion. I've amended the motion. Is there a second for that amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Any discussion on the amended motion?
My personal opinion is that, you know, obviously, we're addressing it, and it needs to be addressed. I also have heard from quite a few people in town that, that we're talking about, you know, more stringent, more stringent results. But, you know, I've been, I've been on the other side of this issue once, more privately than publicly, and was not happy about it. But, did you get your second on the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Mickelson has seconded that.
Okay, you got your second, so.
All right, so we'll-
I'd just like to make one comment, if you don't mind. Look, I'm the senior member of this board, maybe not in years, but second senior in years, but senior in age. Been around a long time. I've never, never had contacts from residents like I did from this unfortunate incident last Monday night, or the May 5th. It's beyond anything I could imagine. It was really quite disappointing to see it unfold. And it just happened so quickly, and it just, it got out of hand, I think. Unfortunately, the back and forth didn't help either. But I find it to be, it's a black mark on this board, to have something like that happen at our meeting. And I can tell you this, if anything like this ever, ever happens again, I'll get out of this seat, I'll walk out of this building, I'll never come back. Maybe some people will be happy about that, I don't know. But, but that's, that's my promise. It's unforgivable, in my opinion.
Well, I too, as you can well imagine, received communications, and, which is why I drafted the statement I made earlier this evening, which addressed all locally elected and appointed officials. Because as I said, I think there is egg on a number of faces. That is also why I included in my statement that when making a statement or writing a letter, one must be careful to either within the statement body of the letter, or at the signature or qualifying endorsement of the statement, to make it clear that the content of either represents their personal position, or by a motion and vote of a board, is the position of the entire board, committee, commission, et cetera. Because that night, the back and forth, which was uncomfortable, but was not truthful from all parties. And not only was it not truthful, there are other ways that we could have used it as a discussion point. And I have met with looking ahead at what this looks like for our town meeting, and what's gonna happen there, how we move forward with a new town administrator, which means I also had to reach out to him, because there was concerns, how do I work with this board, that committee, going forward. And the actions, I will say, of FinCom did put us in jeopardy. And I was hoping that the statement I read earlier would be heard by elected and appointed officials within our community to reflect on their positions, actions, behaviors. That being said, the motion on the floor currently is to ask that Mr. McDonald apologize.
Actually, it's to make the amendment first. You have to vote on the amendment before you vote on the main motion.
So the amendment was not a written letter, but an apology. It could be verbal.
I'd like to make one more comment.
Okay.
My first experience in town government was as a town meeting member years and years ago. And I listened as the finance committee and the Select Board were at arms insulting each other. The relationship was terrible. I also saw that the school committee submitted a 1-9 number, $40 million, no information, no backup material. They just, that's the way it ran. And a few years later after that, we were shutting off streetlights and trying to save money, because the town's finances were down the drain. And that's how you, that's what happens when you run government without great communication, great respect. I've also said this once before, the culture changed. Laura Stone, Mike Watson, and others who thought liked them changed the culture to a condition of more respect and ability to work with one another. And I don't agree, regarding the finance committee, I probably agree, disagree with them as much as anybody else. But they have a right to stand, they have a right to be respected and be listened to. And this issue goes beyond any individual here, anybody here. This is about how town government works. It's impossible to run town government with all these little fiefdoms and all these little situations, and town meeting twice a year, and we trying to do the best we can. And the only way we have a chance in any way is to have a respect with some kind of communication, that we work together as a group, and bring people in to a room who can make a decision and have respect for one another. And I think that's critically important, and I don't wanna go back the way it was. I think we've done a nice job, over the years, trying to build this disrespect communication. We gotta keep it going, and that's why I brought up this motion. However, I do also stand by the democratic process. I'll stand with the majority of whatever it is, how this vote comes out. Thank you.
Well, we will continue with this. But in full transparency of communication-
Mm-hmm.
I wish I had, it had been communicated to me.
We spoke, and you told me what you were going to do. And my decision, it was not made callously. I felt that we had spoken, and I did this because I thought it was something that was, was necessary, and we had spoken.
Madam Chair, we could call the vote. Let's just-
Call the vote, yes. So right now, the amendment is-
We move forward. Let's go.
Read.
Okay, so we first have to vote on the amendment?
Yep.
Okay, so I will go down the line. Mr. Tattelbaum?
No.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Abstain.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks votes yes. So the motion for it not to be a written letter goes forth. So back to the main motion on this, which would be to direct Select Board member Sean McDonald to apologize, to make an apology directed to the Town of Dartmouth Finance Committee and Select Board, as well as the staff and volunteers of the town, its residents. This apology must address at minimum the specific issues set forth in the Town of Dartmouth Select Board Code of Conduct. Conduct of members, respect for the process, conduct of public meetings. There'll be no tolerance of this behavior, and any further repetition will result in intensified action by the Select Board. That is the current motion on the floor. Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Abstain.
And Mrs. Brooks? Votes no, but the motion carries. I am going to continue with board updates, and we will address this at the end. Mr. Mickelson, did you have any other board updates?
Nothing else to say.
Mr. McDonald, did you have a board update?
Yeah, I do. In regards to the Code of Conduct, I know what it is. I wrote it. I submitted it. And to be honest with you, I'm ashamed that my verbiage demeanor that night got out of hand. I will apologize for the tenor of the discussion that night. I will not apologize for the content. For a solid year, I worked along with this board to get a town administrator. And to have a wrench thrown into this just basically got me upset. At the meeting at the finance committee, these were the comments that were made. It is not our role to say, we only think that they should make this amount. We do not have any right to negotiate. If we were to put a number in there, we really don't have a rationale for that number. We can just throw any number in there without any rationale. The motion to reduce the line item was made by the chairman. In all my years on any board, watching any board, I've never heard of a chairman making a motion. I've heard of a chairman making an assumption to an emotion. And that assumption would be, after a discussion, the chairman would say, okay, do we need, we need a motion to do this. The motion is made by somebody else, seconded, and then it's gone forward. The chairman does not make the motion, but the chairman did. That's okay. I understand that. The amount that they talked about was from a previous contract and not the current contract. And there was also something else that also really bothered me. The night of the meeting that we were interviewing for the town administrator, a letter was delivered to one of our members, which I never saw. We heard later that the finance committee was recommending another candidate for the position. At that meeting that night, it was also noted that they were, they wanted another person for the town administrator position. You can put two and two together, you can say what it is. They have a right to make their decision. But to actually reduce the line item in the salary budget, in the contract, if you put two and two together, you know, to me, that's almost sabotaging the whole thing. Again, I will apologize to everybody for my tone. I will not apologize for anything else.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I will say, apology accepted. I do think Mr. McDonald does raise some points that were also brought up to me by other members of other residents who contacted, contacted me. And I think each of us has to think in our personal actions, either at the meeting of May 5th, or at any point in time, whether we represent the town in, and our own personal reputations to the best light we can at all times. So-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made. Seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Mickelson? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven, five, eight, five minutes.